Okay, and you're. Okay, all right, I'll call to order the committee of the whole meeting at 5:33 PM. First up is the good of the order. Anything anyone has? You can also use your counselor or the counselor if that works. Okay. Um, we're, oh, go ahead.
All right, I have something else. So I wanted to bring something up that had to do with the fireworks discussion we had. I, after the meeting, I was thinking more about it. And I'm just thinking, I mean, from other conversations we'd had at a prior meeting, just feeling a little bit unsure about the outreach that we had planned. And, and then I also saw some comments online. I said, I don't think this was a survey, or they've done this with so many other things. So there were comments like that. And so I thought, I'm going to go back and listen to what we discussed the last time. And when we discussed the, I think it was in March or May, I can't remember, March. It, the conversation was whether we would, you know, put something on the ballot, or could we do a survey? Well, you know, we just sent it to the general public, you know, someone could take it 10 times. It could be weighted, it'd be, you know, they may or may not even live in our community. So we kind of get a balanced response. And so it seemed like we kind of, if you listen to it, narrowed it down, you know, do you really rate it? We give them out, you know, potentially a postcard or something to only residents. And then it would be clear that they would get their one response via or to via the postpart. And how the meeting ended is the direction to staff is that we would, it would be brought back. How much help to do that in the alerts like that. So that's my, I went and listened to it. And that's what it seemed like. The consensus was that we really wanted to get feedback that was broad. And my, you know, thinking more about it, I love that we're getting the feedback. And I think that kind of feedback events like that is great for brainstorming, getting ideas, feedback. But when you really want it to fit into the community, I think what I've discussed at that fire meeting by the whole of council and what, you know, it seemed to be the agreement of the group is that we really wanted to look into sending out a little postcard and trying to really get a temperature check of those who live inside city limits. And I still agree with that. And I'm just really, and there was also another discussion, and it was actually, remember, or a mayor pro temp Henry, I think I had said that I thought I had got it at the meeting, but it was actually council member Henry that said, you know, there's not a, always a yes or a no, there's an in-between, you know, between completely banned fireworks and say as we are, you know, there could be, you know, thousands or things like that. So I, I, it felt like that was a conversation I came forward for meetings so that we all knew how that was something people wanted to do. But I, it was a really, it was a more lengthy, thoughtful conversation about one about how we wanted to do our outreach. And yeah, I was a bit caught up at the last meeting about what the plan was a bit. It wasn't until, you know, after the meetings, I really thought that I thought we had another opportunity that worked. So anyway, I just wanted to bring that up, and I don't know if that's something we could talk about. Is it on the agenda in one meeting later? Or maybe no one, you know, everyone's just fine, just, you know, just starting that idea that we talked about before. I'm just not sure where we're all at.
Just really quick, I, I do remember anything you're talking about, but I, I do remember seeing numbers at some point, but then we weren't moving forward much. But anyways, the rollout of the, oh, and then I think I saw your hand, but one second, I'm just gonna say, I think the initial rollout, I mean, there's a lot of opportunity. And of course, for us to talk about this when it's on the agenda again, we can make that sooner rather than later because I don't want to too much out of time. But yeah, I think it's an open kind of evolving thing, and that would be up to council on what they want to, to do. But go ahead, City of Alexandria.
We did provide numbers. Oh, okay. The postcard idea, it was not insignificant. Yeah, council can choose how they want to spend their resources.
Okay. Because I didn't remember discussing it, so I guess I must have missed it. I apologize, maybe, could, would you mind saying that to me again?
It's in one of them.
Oh, it's in one of the, yeah. Okay. Because I'd like to have a conversation about whether we wanted to forward with that or not.
Okay. Yeah, I'll make sure, I'll check the dates because I know this is coming back to an agenda soonish or in the coming months. So we'll have an opportunity to talk about it again.
August 20th, we are promoting that particular public comment, having fireworks, people come and give public comment on fireworks. So we had planned on promoting the August 20th meeting for that. So we were already planning to promote that particular meeting to talk about fireworks.
Yes, that would make sense to have a matching agenda, I am not happy to have a conversation too. Okay, anything else from the good of the order? Okay, so review of regular meeting agenda, I know I coordinated well, so I don't want to have discussion during the cloud. Just to heads up that that one item, I'm concerned, I'm guessing there will be a motion to pull it, and that will be up to council on what they want to do with that. But other than that particular one, are there, is there other issues with other items that you might, might need you to pull them off and have a discussion now, but just so that you know that? Okay, with that, we'll move on to our only discussion item for the cloud tonight, which is vision and small town presentation results in council exercise with Naomi, senior planner.
Hello, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, so tonight is going to be a little bit different. We're going to start with the regular presentation, and then we're going to move on to an activity. And then the presentation will continue after that. So everybody can see the presentation slide, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So tonight, we're going to do something a little bit different. It is connected to the comprehensive plan, namely developing amendments to the existing vision statement. But we're going to start this with an exercise. So we're going to do that first. And then we're going to move on to the small town activity that we did at Duval Days and give you some information on that. And then after that, we're going to go over some of the key recommendations made by the steering committee regarding the vision statement. And then we'll conclude with a little assignment for you all to take home. So we'll start with the visioning exercise. And so does everybody have a cell phone on them or a laptop?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, fantastic. So the next step would be if everybody can go to the following website, it's menti meter dot com. And then if everybody can give a, well, I guess you can't give individual thumbs up. If Rita can just let me know once everybody is on there.
Is everyone on, or is anyone not on yet? Okay, we have one, a couple more, just waiting.
Okay, I'll wait until I hear from Rita. And then I'm going to go to the, I'm going to move on to sharing a different. And this might help you as well, if anybody prefers QR codes.
Are we supposed to enter the, you know, code access code?
Yes, I just want to make sure everybody's on the website first.
Is everyone on the website? Yeah.
Yep, okay, so if you look at the screen, you'll see at the very top that it says joinmenti.com, and then it gives you an eight-digit code in two clusters of four. So.
Come on, no, we can't see it because we need to move hopefully. There you go, okay. So we. Is everybody in?
Just waiting for, was that the cell?
Oh, yeah.
Four seven five zero four two eight zero.
And we'll be doing many more of these. I mean, not really.
Is everybody in? All right. We probably just need the space, you can probably center it. All right, got it. Thank you, everyone is good. We're good, Naomi.
Okay.
Oh, wait a minute, sorry, sorry, one more.
Let's keep it in other pop-ups screen.
I see three thumbs up.
We're just waiting for one more.
Okay.
Okay.
We're good, we're good.
Excellent, okay. So it's a little bit of a learning process in the beginning, but once you've done this once, then it's pretty easy afterwards. So the thing that we're trying to get at before we start talking about a vision statement is really determining what is at the heart of Duval. So we're going to start with a couple of questions. And this is the first question. It's more of a request, and it is to close your eyes for a moment and think of the phrase, small town feeling. Then summarize what a small town feeling looks like in two to three words and enter those into the screen that you have. And staff can participate in this too. This is more of a brainstorming exercise.
We do that once. You know, we do that one time?
Yes, you do it one time.
And you mean our two to three words?
Yeah, it, it asks me if I want to do it again.
I mean, this, this isn't, this is a brainstorming exercise. So if you think of other things that you want to put in there, go ahead and do it again. I still see some people typing, so I'm not gonna push it along, especially when you're thinking of some important words and what that means to you. I'll wait until Rita can, or Laura can give me the go ahead and let me know it looks like everybody's done.
Looks like we're good.
Beautiful, okay. So this is what came out, you can see it's a, it's a word bubble that forms as you start entering words. And the more frequent the word is entered, the bigger the word is. And so you can see that the number one word that everybody came up with was friendly. Next to that is community, belonging, and safety. And then there are many other variations around that. But you can see that there's a a pattern, I, I saw in the beginning, the known and the knowing being known, feeling like you know everybody, connection. Has seen friendly faces. Don't worry, we're, I'm going to save this and you'll get a copy of this afterwards. But that is how everybody feels, which is really cool. Okay, this is the, the second question, very similar. Now you go on to question two, and you close your eyes again and think of the same phrase. And then you do the same thing, you summarize it. But now think about what a small town feeling sounds like. What are the sounds you're hearing?
Looks like we're good to go.
Excellent, thank you so much. I'm just gonna let that sit there just for a second. And it looks like, which is, again, like really beautiful, is that the two biggest things that everybody, when they think of what a small town feeling sounds like is, it sounds peaceful and there's a lot of laughter. So it's a very happy little place where everyone is laughing and having fun. And you can look at these words and imagine all of these sounds happening at the same time. And so this is part of the experience of a small town feeling is what it sounds like. Okay, this is the next question. Same thing, except now you're going to close your eyes or not, if you don't feel like it. And think about, when you think of a small town feeling, what are the smells? What are you smelling when you're walking through town or driving through town, going for a walk?
Everybody done? Okay.
Awesome. Thank you, everybody. This one kind of made me laugh a little bit.
Yours alone.
Cows and bread. Uh, it's, you know, home cooking, comfort food, um, manure. Uh, but in, in all seriousness, uh, this is great. Uh, this gives a really, um, perspective viewer to describe this to somebody who's never been here. Maybe they can't see, but if you said, well, what does it smell like? And you could describe it to them that way. Okay, now here's the, here's the big one. This isn't going to be a word bubble. This is going to show what you write. And you're going to think one more time about the phrase and all of the different words that you saw before. And close your eyes and, and think of a scene. What's the first scene that comes into your mind when you're thinking of a small town feeling?
Would you mind explaining one more time exactly? For just a, how should I describe that scene of being in this small town? Okay.
Sure, yeah, I can describe it to you. So I'll, I'll give you an example. Does that help?
Okay.
Yeah, so when, um, in the years, a year, almost two, two years at the beginning of next year, when, uh, of the different experiences I've had in Duval, I closed my eyes and thought, oh, what's that small town feeling? The thing that I noticed is specifically in the Duval days, uh, when I was participating in that outreach exercise. And I was looking around, I took a couple of videos and if I had to describe it, it was a parade where, um, everyone there, I was watching all the people and everybody was smiling, people, uh, appeared relaxed. Uh, that nobody was having the sort of high alert with darting eyes. Everybody just seemed very relaxed, like they were in their living room. And standing on the street, there were children playing and there was a lot of smiling. And so I would describe that parade moment as that small town feeling. So it's like a picture, a snapshot in time.
Did everyone get a chance to? Say a question? I think so. Yeah. Naomi, I think we're good.
Great. Um, so what I'm gonna do now is, uh, read these out loud because there may be someone that will watch this meeting and maybe can only listen to it. So I'm just going to read through them. The first one was people mingling and enjoying themselves and kids playing. Another one was kids playing in the park. Another one was walking down the street, going into small independent shops and seeing and interacting with familiar and friendly faces. Nothing is crowded or rushed, peaceful. Another one is going into a restaurant and knowing almost everyone in there, making connections in my store and seeing customers in their daily lives. Another one is people sitting in front of shops, sitting on steps, talking and being neighborly. Another one is tree shaded sidewalks in front of small local shops, bustling with families but not overcrowded. There's room for everyone to roam through town. Another one is music in the park, dancing. Another one is a sense of belonging in a community that is self-efficient and grows to support the ideas and wants of the community. And finally, friends connecting on Main Street under awnings while getting coffee or ice cream, saying hello and laughing together. Dogs touching noses while their children play together. Thank you very much for doing that. So what's next is that the results will be shared with you via email after the meeting because you're gonna want to look at them when you're doing your last, um, little exercise. And I'm going to stop sharing that. I'm going to go back to the presentation now. And now what I'm going to show you is, uh, what happened during Duval days? And what did people say there? And you'll find that there's some similarities, but before I continue, I just want to ensure that you can see the new screen.
Yes.
Okay, excellent. So during Duval days, we did a couple of activities, including another activity that was associated with public art. And, uh, a second activity associated with that with a, um, a mural. Uh, but the third activity was the small town exercise. We invited people to participate together as a team. Um, Laura and Cynthia were there and I was helping out in any way I could. And so the big question that we asked in this exercise was, what does the phrase "small town" mean to you? We had them fill out a card and attach it to the window and then every of you walked past City Hall, you saw that a lot of those comments were up there for people to read for a little while. So here's some pictures from the activity. We had the activities numbered and these are the different cards that people got to fill out. And here's my favorite picture of Laura and Cynthia ever. You can see that they were having a good time and it was kind of that feeling with everybody else there as well. And that's what it looked like when the exercise was completed. It had information about the comprehensive plan. But in the center, it had everybody's comments. And the reason that we wanted to center it is because that is the center of everything is the driving force behind the way that policies are shaped. So this is the results. The number one idea, whether it was in a, within a phrase or it was the central idea of a phrase, was the idea of being a community, a true community. And that's what came out. The second one is that everybody knows each other. When you're walking down the street, a lot of the comments said, "People know me. I feel known." That was another very common thing was, "I feel known by people and I know other people." And the third, uh, I categorized a lot of different statements that I classified as doing things together. And that includes, uh, the concerts in the park. It includes Duval days, the parade. Different activities and doing them together as a community was a really big thing when they thought about what a small town feeling was. And the fourth was friendship, different variations of friendship, friendliness. That was really important to people. And then, not surprisingly, family and children, a real focus on, um, having local, small businesses. Uh, being the primary presence as far as economy is concerned. And a lot of people talked about fun and laughing and having a good time and enjoying yourself, being neighborly, a focus on, on keeping the natural environment, uh, focus on creativity and then being able to walk to anything. These are in order of how frequently they were mentioned and you can see in the word bubble here, how much community was important to everyone. Um, along with that, you can see the businesses and local, uh, came out a lot, knowing and being known, friendliness, kids, um, families, but it's very much, uh, similar to what we just did in the exercise, in my opinion. Um, but, uh, that's what it seems like. Now, moving on, we have, when we were working with the steering committee, we had four meetings. And one of the things that we did was ask them about the existing vision statement and ask them if they had any, um, recommendations or feedback on the existing vision statement. And it came out to the top, there were top four things the steering committee focused on. The first one was, uh, a recommendation to use words like inclusive, open and welcoming instead of just the phrase "family friendly". And I want to explain that on behalf of the steering committee because what they were saying is some people, when they hear family friendly, they might feel left out because maybe they're, uh, a little bit older and they don't have any family left. Or they are here in Duval alone and they don't have any family here. And so it's that sort of thing of, how do you say family friendly? How do you say it feels like a family when maybe you don't have any family left? How do you change that phrasing? The second point that came up was the phrase "cutting edge of technology". That phrase is in our existing vision statement. Um, and what they felt was that this was questionable and recommended replacing it with something that reflects the city and its people better. And then the third key point was the importance of community involvement is not fully expressed in the current vision statement. And that this needs to be emphasized, which I'd like to point out was something that came up in the Duval days exercise. And the idea of community also came up in the visioning exercise that we did in the beginning. And then finally, the fourth key recommendation had to do with, um, acknowledging the authentic history, including the tribes is important and is missing from the vision statement. This should be included. So those are the four key recommendations. And now on to the last part, and that's the building blocks. So that this is just an exercise for you to do, uh, using the top words from the live poll. Um, write two to three sentences that reflects Duval that could be used in a vision statement. Doing the same thing, do it with, uh, the top words, uh, or any words that you actually, that you saw that was in the slide that talked about, uh, the findings from Duval days, from all those cards that people filled out. And then the third part of the exercise is to connect the last two items. So now you've got a couple of sentences. And just draft a statement, um, and in, that incorporates the recommendations and the exercise that you just did and the Duval days exercise, all of those words, which a lot of them are very similar. Um, and create, uh, just to draft a couple of phrases that would, that you'd prefer to see in the vision statement. And so once we get those, then, uh, we'll put something together that we can present to you that reflects your exercise, it reflects the Duval days exercise and that also reflects, um, the steering committee recommendations. Um, I hope that that's not too much and I hope that you actually have fun doing that. Um, you're going to get all the building blocks, uh, from us in an email uh, soon after this presentation. And, uh, when you have your draft statements, you can email them to me or Laura, um, no later than July 26th. If you need more time, we can change that date as well. Um, and that concludes, uh, the presentation that I have. And, uh, if anybody, uh, has any questions or anything, please, uh, let me know and then Laura can answer any questions too, if, uh, I cannot.
Any questions? For found folks? Go ahead, tell Laura, Jim.
Uh, that was excellent, uh, exercise, Naomi. I, I appreciate you, uh, you doing that. And it's good to see what's actually on people's minds as you talk about small towns uh, and trying to keep Duval as a, as a small town. And I, I know I sound a bit like a world renowned and everyone here has heard this before. But all the items that we just talked about, we think makes a small town a great place to, uh, to live. Uh, growth slowly erodes those items. Uh, and, uh, as we discussed before, growth is easy. Uh, preventing growth is hard. And I still firmly believe this council has some very hard decisions to make and hope that we actually have the port to, to, to do so in order to keep Duval small.
Uh, Councilmember Nefflin?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment how excited I was that it talked about, um, gosh, I don't see the light. It was something that made me think of giving back, volunteering. Because when a town is small, you feel like it's, it's part of your town, you know what I mean? And you take care of it and you give back because it's you, you help your neighbor. Um, and I, and I think that is something that arose as you get, uh, larger, it becomes impersonal. You think someone else will do it. Um, it's someone else's job, but when it's small, it, you belong, um, you know. Anyway, I am not getting the words to it the way I would like to, but I think that's, uh, what I'm trying to say. And I was excited that that was reflected. The feedback you got from this year, I really think that that's important.
Yeah, Councilmember Oshin?
Yeah, I sort of along this, the same theme, maybe a little pivot, but you know, in terms of talking to some of the candidates, council and other things, it's sort of a bit of give and take. And you know, that's one of the things that came through to me as well as a lot of the themes that are captured up here as council, we don't do a great job sort of communicating that back to the community. So I think that's the other piece, but what we do, but even, you know, simple things like the baskets, how the, you know, the school came together with, you know, Duval hardware together with the city to, to plan something that helped everybody and sort of the fabric of effort. And that's just one small example. I think, you know, we, we focus on the big things sometimes and we don't, you know, focus on reinforcing some of these small things that, that have a lot of value in the community and, and really reflect that small town character. That would be much harder to do in the, you know, urban center. Uh, so, you know, again, just a reminder to ourselves that we, we have a role to, to sort of promote that theme in addition to just correcting, correcting.
I think that answered your questions. Councilmember Stappel?
I appreciate, uh, me putting this together. That is a pretty fun exercise for me. And you know, we always talk about a small community, but I don't know, what's population's 8,000, so in some respects, that's small compared to Seattle. We know there's respects, that's kind of large compared to where Duval was 10, 20, 30 years ago. So, you know, managing growth is difficult. I don't think that's a challenge or, I don't know, it's.
Doug, go ahead.
But I don't think you had any, I was just hearing, so go ahead. Do you want to be open and transparent? We are really struggling with our growth capacity and job capacity right now. We've been, we've spent quite a few months on it and we're hoping to get some better information in the next couple of weeks. But we need to be prepared that we are not likely with our existing city limits going to meet affordable housing targets nor our business targets, like for jobs. And so we are going to be looking at some difficult conversations. We're here to help manage those, validate them, look at our options as well.
And then Naomi?
I can cry for Naomi for this work, this. As you know, I've gone through this, this is one way done for all of us, appreciate it. And yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Naomi. It's not often in a lot of meetings that we get those feel-good vibes and something really fun. So much appreciation and of course it was super well done, no surprise there. I think, you know, there's a lot of good conversations that'll come forward. And it's, for me, I want to focus on like, how do you maintain that? I don't always think it's trying to prevent everything, you know, but it's just focused on enriching those ideas and promoting them back to the community like Ron was saying. But yeah, definitely family conversations ahead for sure. But we appreciate this. So thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
With that, that was our one discussion item. Would you want to go introduce the administrators, something?
Sure. Be happy to. Director Lashewski is going to join us. So we will skip that part of the city administration for, and we need to, to see all the data first. And then we'll come back to his slides.
This is always the fun part for me.
Oh, you said go down here, so I'm sorry.
Oh, that's fine. So if we page down to the first white slide, oh, one more, there we go. And Rita, I don't know if you can change to slide our presentation view, might be a little easier to see if that works.
I might drag back a little.
So on the top, after animation, so it's been called slide show.
We're down at the bottom, it's like a little, it's a little, it's a little.
And it's okay if not.
Yep. That's, no.
Okay, she's presenting and sharing.
Yeah. We'll have Director Thomas, can you see?
I can see.
Okay.
If it were right in front of me, no. So good evening, Mayor and Council. It's really good to be back from just over two weeks of vacation. We are starting to gear up for more fun meetings this summer and end of the fall. So we have a capital facilities plan workshop and actually economic development as well next week on 7/24 from 5:30 to 7:30. So Planning Commission is hosting that. You'll get a packet by either end of day Thursday or Thursday on Friday. So we're in the midst of being a lot prepared right now. The Parks Child Open Space Plan and Housing Workshop is set for 8/24, so that's next month. So don't forget about that. It's a little reminder already that's on your calendar. And the good news is the Parks Child Open Space Plan, it's coming along. I would say we're pretty folks, we run the first draft through our committee. We're working on comments to our consultant for the second draft. And that will then come to Planning Commission and Council for a couple of other additional iterations based on comments. We'll make sure to get that to you in time so that you can win the whole document and not feel like you have to do it over the weekend or on Monday or Tuesday. It's, you know, it'll be, you know, pictures, speeches. So tomorrow's a Quantley-Watershed Forum meeting, is it, sorry, is it the Visitor Center? This is, every city shares and hosts a meeting once a year. It happens to be during our music in the park. So next year, we will make sure that that does not happen again. So apologies in advance. Yeah, I'm kind of muddled about that. We did complete a pre-application for a mixed-use project on Main Street. It's for three buildings with 4,000 square feet of commercial space and 36 units. While it's what they proposed, it probably doesn't quite fit the site. And so we've given them comments back. My guess is that, you know, you'll see a reduced amount of residential units and maybe a little bit more commercial development on the site. Towns 143rd will begin construction of flat improvements soon. We're just waiting on their bond. And once we get their bonds, we sign those and then we find the construction drawings. And then they start their flat improvements, that usually takes a year. So you'll see that over this next building cycle. And then they'll start building residential units, maybe by the end of next summer, at least starting with the early work project. The brewery project was reviewed by Planning Commission for design review late June. Right now, the project is currently on hold and that's due to project cost. So we're, I talked internally to our team today and we're going to start up another meeting just to see what we can do to see how to get them over the finish line. I will say, this is not unusual for small projects that are done by, say, individual family. Because you have, you're going to get through the project, right, through the various entitlement. And then you have a building permit fee, then you have, you know, all of your other like sewer, water, transportation, you have those other fees as well. So you can look at, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars just to pick up your permit. And that can be, that can be challenging. So we want to see, you know, how do we keep it moving? Because it is a really important project. They're really invested in it. They own the property. So stay tuned, we're trying to find some pathways for that. Let's see, next slide.
Hey, Laura, can I?
Yes.
We're gonna, could you remind us of the housing density in, well, can we go back slow? Thank you. The housing density for items four and five, both lists, items four and five.
Um, that is in a commercial site, so there, it's not based on a density.
Okay.
So there's no density for residential and the commercial zone. So they're just above commercial.
Okay, the 36 units aren't house, aren't, isn't those?
They are housing, but there is no density requirement for it.
I see.
It's based on meeting all your other standards, like, you know, parking, stormwater, curvier sidewalk, pathways, landscape, buffers.
I see. Well, yeah, they're attached, but it's.
They're, but, so they're, yeah, they're on top of the commercial building.
Gotcha. Okay, that helps me, that helps me a lot. And how about the town 143?
Town 143, that is a hard planning project.
Hard one.
They didn't get 20 minutes for it here, but that's what this.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Nefflin?
Yeah, I wanted to get towns 143. I know the first R20 development is a lot of large town halls, three town halls. Will this one have more single level units or?
So there won't be any single units, but there will be smaller units. So we'll have a mix of units and smallest 12 minutes will be in that project.
But none will be single story.
Willow Ridge Lot 22, we approved that permit for construction and for building permit earlier this year. It's likely going to also allow due to project costs. And it's, it is a very expensive project because it's not that many units and it's on Main Street and it requires a lot of clearing grade. The Duval Mosque, we had a meeting that we're scheduling, hopefully in the next week or so, to go over our first review. We also are doing the towns 143, the site plan review. Is what they did is they booked their project apart and did their flat first. And so that was approved over a year ago. And then the site plan review is going to go to Planning Commission in September for review. That project was purchased by a, a new home developer. We continue to make progress on it to us. Like we said, we have a second draft. And the, based on the advisory committee comments, we're making updates. Then our next step is to come to Planning Commission and Council at a joint workshop, which is scheduled. The conference of plan is slowly progressing, a little slower than we want. We're struggling with our land capacity analysis for affordable housing. And this is really based on the number that the state gave us last year, which is quite a few units. And we just, it doesn't look, it does not look like we're going to have internal capacity based on existing city limits. And really the lack of, you know, of being able to, you know, to rezone areas, you know, that probably wouldn't necessarily to rezone. So we're struggling a bit with that. And the challenge is that we have to also go now, the requirement to King County for review process, and they're saying that's two to five months. And right now, cities are getting lengthy review comments back from the county. And I don't want to take anything into the county before we come to Commission and Council and have that conversation. And then, once we finish that, then we get to go to PSRC. And then we get to go to the state because now they get to review our housing plan. So this is really new territory and I'm actually going to have a meeting with Cynthia. Because I, I am concerned about how we're going to make it all fit and what our options are.
Thank you. Question, it's for Director Thomas. Councilmember Nefflin?
Yeah, I was talking about affordability. I, I think what I struggle with is trying to find more land outside of existing city limits to meet some type of affordability target. I feel like that same discussion occurred when we annexed other areas, saying we're going to zone it denser, we're going to do this. And we did not get any affordable. So if we, if all we're doing is planning, we bring in additional land and there's no requirement or restriction that what is built is affordable, we are just going to bring in more land that will not be built. And that is rinse and repeat. That is what we keep seeing for decades. And I, it's really frustrating and I, I, I want to have a conversation about that, that we, we aren't just required to bring in more land because it could accommodate affordable housing. But if there's no requirement and there's no, no one standing there ready to build affordable housing, that is, we have not gotten affordable housing. We're getting luxury condos and town halls.
The Canadian Department, Canada Department does not disagree and these are discussions that we have to look at and find what our opportunities are to restrict. If we do need to bring in things, we must, and that's going to be a discussion with our legal counsel as well. Because you can, you can do it through, you know, pre-annexation agreements. And you can do it through rezon agreements. I do know that we have those, that, that we will do that and we find what that looks like. But if we just annex area, you're right, it will go to just market rate. So we definitely know and acknowledge that. And we are not the only ones that are struggling with those issues.
Yeah, thank you.
Rita, if you could go to the top of the presentation, I will turn it over to Director Lashewski to do the call of work update.
Good evening, everyone. Steve Lashewski, Public Works. Not a lot of heavy stuff, but a lot of stuff. So if you haven't noticed, the trolls are missing from bridge. So we have a community volunteer willing to refurbish those. We talked about being was up two or a month or two ago through cultural commission, some requests, Cynthia and Rita. And we were cleaning the concrete areas and trying to clean the hole themselves, but they were falling apart. So we stopped and then we're lucky to find a, a local artist who's going to rework them. So good news too, that the road is closed and we can have that work done in my safe way. County came out and worked with us on the crafting. We're working on the eager area and the other fields which are at bay. But now they're helping us tackle the lily pad situation out there. So that occurred last month. Next slide. With retreat, but we all are gathering up. We're occupied, we're not done, we're working on punch items, we do have a temporary occupancy. We did receive reimbursement for final grant request payment from Department of Commerce. Just today, our new
Sullivan.
Our new accountant, Brian, sent a message to me, tried to kindly send finance, like FYI, this grant reimbursement was submitted. So we got a wire today for that. It's got us from the state, it's been rerun. A generator has been installed, so I guess we're just waiting on some final pieces. Getting help, the police station, do some work on their evidence corral in Sallyport. It's all done now, next slide. Four ports are finally painted, the BDA children, after six months. Many, many phone calls, emails about the football courts and why and where and how. And our good news is they're, they're up and running. Not badly, but the new news is they still call them on work, so.
And they're pickle.
Yes, it's kind of, you may notice that park chip replacement, so a chip hole, the under drainage was blocked. So we had to remove all chips, get out the drains, free all the drains, I'm going to install some additional drains. A lot of public comment on things out there. I don't do that kind of stuff. So good news is we did use the tractor truck to help remove some of that because it included, it included backhoe and dump trucks. And everything else would have destroyed the grass, the irrigation, the sidewalks, so. That was what we, we have a really good rate to rent down on a monthly basis, about 12,000 for the month. So we use it for store, but we all manage it for a few days, so now that's a, a player. And then the provider of the ADA compliant chips is, we shop them around and those are the lowest price to bring in the chips and probably cost people. Again, so we didn't, but that is, they're done now, they just finished up. I mean, getting to the house real quick at 5:30, kind of like down here, they're, they're done. Third Avenue, the road goes today. So clearing moments, fake removal comes down Thursday, it's have the fish windows, so they have to be in now there by the end of August. We're installing core, we expect that to start writing, we're going to host the core pieces down at the Taylor Landing. You come into the parking lot right on the end, you put right, where it's chained off. So we have a special use permit for King County because that's their land. It's all concrete, which is great. So we, we normally keep linen debris, a couple of dumpers in there. And then we're going to host those big blocks over there for the cover. Overlay, we won't have another meeting in early August, so between now and the middle of this meeting, you should see the overlay work occurring on 150th between 275th and that part and then up to the entrance to Ken Park. South side, so about 2:00 a.m. That is mostly grant funded. Picture on the right is the headwork screening, so the traveling van screen and old conveyance auger are being replaced with the new drum screen. So all the parts are here and now they're working on the, the ditching in the existing infrastructure, all over the game on parking lot with the permanent signs on the right. So I worked on that, they expect to be in here, the entire project by mid autumn, so about another month. And we'll be completing all improvements for the forky train, UV bio solids, intake screenings, and a couple other small bits and pieces. Bio solids is really exciting news. It's way drier than we actually expected. All of our, we had, it is not as expensive as we can vote and we're calling away way more. Uh, all of our bead is now as expensive as we can vote and we're calling away way more. And we pay on tonnage, so our our tonnage is way down, our yield is way up, that's good news. And then, what do you leave next slide? Okay, yeah, Eagle Sound, Matt Beaver's finished his patio gazebo behind the police station. So we'll figure out how to do a little ribbon cutting there and then have the remodels. And I believe that's uh, your conclusion. Oh, no more, merge management. Uh, so now we have the main home preventive merge management plan done. The Amsterdam is the emergency. Has a mitigation plan, so it looks working on that. Uh, that helps for more grants to manage activities. And then for the running direction, no one is participating on small agency behalf of the county. For some updates to the WAC, so there's the advisory committee is helping participate in. Uh, really just keeping tabs on what they are or aren't trying to do. It looks like they're trying to make a little more culprit cities. Uh, one of the examples he gave was the percent compliance now C E M Ps was fairly low. And no real side effects, now they're trying to make um, it's talking like harder with actual side effects. So trying to make sure that like, at least we have a voice at the table and we can hear what what are related to the municipal stuff. That concludes my slides, that's gonna be called.
Uh, Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, what was that generator used for?
Oh, that's the generator that will um, run the permanent center. So previously, we were thinking about objects in the plant itself. So the electrical capacity analysis for the plant, there's another C A P on the road that is like, oh, you're gonna run this power. Right? So we have to upgrade our our power controls in the plant. So figuring out during the remodel that we were half fed from the grid and half fed back that from the plant was like, just not something we wanted to tolerate. So part of the plan is that the generator to isolate us, get some power back to the plant, so they can go further without upgrades. And then we're not paying them there.
So the plant has its own generator?
The plant has, yeah, it can run for three to seven days if they're down here. So yeah, we're now on.
Kind of building was on.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, this isn't necessarily how you presented, that it was a public works. Uh, something that is going to come forward, I think a future council meeting has a written report, so it's not time we're discussing it. But it's a city hall design RFP. And I, I am a little bit unsure, are we moving ahead with designing a city hall?
We are moving ahead with procuring somebody to help, I mean, co-side locate and and do some development work. But that contract will.
Okay, I just, I'm trying to understand because I I um, I was not hundred percent sure uh, where we were, so we weren't gonna have, you know, a a meeting about our capital facilities plan. And there's talk about potentially, you know, a a higher priority might be that public works building, uh, things like that. And so I'm just, I I'm a little bit, it feels a little bit that part of the course or, you know, that we might not be quite there for designing a city hall. Okay. Um, it was approved in the budget specifically for this, to use ARCA funds for this project. Um, so it was adopted in the budget and in the ARCA presentation we had twelve months ago. It was listed as one of the outstanding projects that still needed to be done. So uh, that is why we're going out for an RFP, because it's budgeted. It was approved in the budget, it was discussed and approved again several months ago, so the money has to be spent. Yeah, I mean, uh, I understand that, but I I do remember when we talked about this in the budget. That there were going to be a lot of conversations kind of before we move forward and so that was put in there. But I, I, I I know Third Avenue, uh, funding for that is nearly impossible. It's not a popular project with, it seems like anyone. Um, it it seems like they have a great need for a new facility for the public works uh, maintenance building. And so I I just, if we have very important things that need to be done, that upper money can be used for those too. So we need to design, you know, we're gonna say selection, design for the public works building and transfer that that funding. Instead of something at city hall that you don't have the money to build one. Um, and lots of other projects that we don't have money for. I I I understand that at one point, we put that in the budget two years ago. Um, but just plowing ahead on something that we have not. I I don't know, I I'm strongly in favor of it. I don't know if we're gonna have a discussion or if we're just gonna issue an RFP and just keep looking forward. We're gonna issue an RFP because that's what council said to do. We were in heaven, but several months ago, we discussed and finance director gave an ARCA presentation on funding, council had a discussion on moving forward with what was on the political list. And that is what city operation plan is going to do.
Councilmember Shaker?
Yeah, I'm sorry, change change the topic, but this is just a slight slight change of topic. Will will, will that also include potential locations for for, okay, good, good. Cause I, I still think that needs to be a priority to actually choose what we're gonna put there.
Yes, and we also have the municipal financial plan project going on right now. Where part of that analysis and they've collected uh, information on Third Avenue. The city hall, uh, all the capital facilities uh, project that A R C did. Um, as well as the public works yards. So part of that project is also strategized on how to plan these big projects.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, certainly, that's what I was gonna say, I think it's less around the specifics of the design and more about coming back with options. Of which there were a number of things in that bucket, of which city hall was one. But obviously, some one of the locations would involve relocating, so I think some others are being hit. But I I still sort of take your point of the you know, misunderstanding the citizens' events. I appreciate the clarity.
Did you have more after this?
Uh, one more. That's very um, hell. So just a couple uh, updates. So first night, summer stage was last week. Uh, the estimated attendance was seven hundred and thirty, so up from last year from our first night. Uh, we had a recycling event this past weekend and it served six hundred and seventy cars that exceeded barriers, it's busy all day. Um, Steve already mentioned that the crew took down the trolls off of the bridge on Monday to begin that refresh project. Uh, reminder that sand blast is this upcoming weekend. And then an update on the Y M C A enrollment for the first two weeks. So the first week there were twenty children registered, um, eight from Duval, one from Carnation. And this week, twelve with the same spread from Duval and Carnation. And then the last slide is just pictures. Um, so uh, far left is summer stage, a couple of pictures of our crew taking down the trolls and then recycling them.
I have a question about the recycling event, I was just curious, do you have metrics at all? And I mean, how many people show up to things that can't be recycled? Or do they track stuff just to get an idea of, cause I feel like it's advertised quite well. And there's a really nice list that goes out, so I was just curious how many people show up for their stuff too.
I'd be hungry.
Oh, that's not a thing, but I'm curiosity.
We can see if we can get it and put it in your written report.
Uh, Councilmember Nelson?
That I was just gonna say on a personal, I I went out late about three o'clock and my wife's been on me. We've had, my work happened in Godway for years and I was gonna give them letters. So waste management to do it and and I came, you know, with a whole bunch of random scrap metal and and some things we disassembled. A printer and a used battery and, you know, everything got taken. So, you know, I thought you had some, one of the things that was clearly indicated is how inclusive they seem to be pretty.
Oh, that's great, that's great. Uh, Councilmember.
And I was just gonna chime in, my husband loaded my car up and took it downtown. He was impressed that it was the fastest he'd ever gone through one of those, like, this was amazing, I just really loved it. So, good job, that's great.
Great, any other questions or thoughts?
Okay, um, is there any council, would you want, does anyone have a council report that you would wanna do during the town? We could also just adjourn.
Oh, I know, I'm sorry.
I lost the zooms. Oh, no worries, okay, we'll pause. Okay, sorry. Thank you for jumping in.
There we are.
Okay, all right, we're back. Yes, no worries, thank you so much for mentioning that. Okay, we're back, everyone, sorry about that. Um, okay, so I think I would just ask, do council members wanna wait until the council meeting, do you have any reports? Do you have any now? Oh, go ahead, Councilmember Shaker.
I have a quick one. Uh, I was able to tell you this Saturday, this past Saturday, this music call, it's two, two of the four bands. Uh, and the attendance was was uh, very good. This was, what was I at, the Grange and the Tower. Uh, and the attendance was very good, I wouldn't say it was overwhelming, there were still places to seek. But uh, the uh, music was excellent, the the crowd very, very appreciative of what uh, what went on. Uh, I I'm not sure exactly how the earlier bands uh, did. But uh, but I'm very pleased with what we've seen so far. And I believe this event has a strong potential for growth even even yet this year.
Yeah, I would agree. I I've gone to um, some of them, I'm not, I couldn't make all. But then uh, this last weekend, I couldn't go because I was working, but I said, you know, my husband, I wanna make this to go. And they, they loved it, it was just so great. It adds that ambiance on Main Street, you can hear the music for pretty far. So um, I agree that it's something that could be built upon. And I think during the summer, it's always a little bit or miss with people being on vacation or different schedules. So I think you'll see some tend to get more of a crowd as more people are around. But I think that depends on overtime as well.
Uh, Councilmember can tell?
I just, I just remind me, I went today to the um, forget which, which organization was putting it on, it was a presentation at the library on the small business incubator. Um, and it's been the very early fill in the area stations, which is kind of getting the rap about what it be interested in and how we would attract people. Yeah, it's an interesting discussion.
Anyone else have anything, you know, like city, oh, go ahead, Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, I just, I attended the site transportation partnership meeting this last week. And um, on the topic um, was both the van pool and then the community van. Um, two different things, van pool is um, more of a transit type program where uh, the people can get together and ride a van together. Um, uh, anyway, I I do hope that we can get um, more of that, I think that regular transit buses isn't always the solution. But we have a lot of people that work at the same places. And so if we could just get those people together, we could reduce some cars on our trip into town. Um, so I'm gonna get some data about how much of that is utilized here in Duval, just out of curiosity. And um, maybe we can get more word out about that program. And then the other one with the uh, community van, um, which is just a van you can sign up and uh, get registered to be a driver, um, maybe you can borrow this van and go anywhere. You can, uh, nonprofits or just even individuals can be drivers. And it can be used for trip up to go on a hike and bring a couple friends or however. Anyway, it's it's a really neat program and I I hope our nonprofits are aware of it too, because I think it's a really great resource. Um, so I asked for some information about just to find out how many um, how many times has it been utilized, who's utilizing it? Just to see if there's some obvious gaps of um, organizations that could take advantage of it. Maybe we could get some targeted outreach. So anyway, when I get that information back, I'll I'll be sure to share it.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything to share?
Um, I attended, Sound Cities Association has a monthly meetup virtually for uh, council presidents, mayor for towns, uh, deputy mayors, that kind of level. And one of the things I asked the group, so it was a small group, like six of us from various cities. And um, there is a common struggle with the affordability, affordability um, and meeting those goals. Um, and how to meet meet them without just getting like, what we, a little bit of what we discussed tonight. Um, and so one thing that I asked was, has anyone worked with the tribe before? Because this had come up um, at one of our tribal council or coffee meetups. And talking about affordability and housing and how there could be a partnership potential there. And so it was curious getting others' reactions that they had thought about that or they had been looking into it. Um, one, the deputy mayor is from the city is escaping, made a moment, had worked with tribes in the past as a career. Um, and so she had just recommended to, to make sure and know that how you go into those agreements, there are ways if it eases people's concerns of like, with the property getting uh, pulled into a trust where it becomes an extension of reservation. Therefore, it could be uh, not held with the same uh, codes and things like that. So there are, it's all very standard, there are agreements that you can get into. But um, another council member from, I think it was Samantha, she was talking and she was trying to connect the tribe and March and do something there. So trying to figure out, you know, to her receiving, it's a no brainer connection, trying to get it going. And it's like, that was interesting, it was neat conversation. Uh, super high level right now, cause nobody's really fully traveled that road yet. Um, but it was something I brought up, cause being in the valley here, I feel like it's a lot more prominent. Um, to think about that, you know, uh, we're not in a huge city, we're small, we're rural. And a lot of the tribe members can't live where they traditionally historically did. Um, you know, when we do meet up with tribal members, the coffee dates, they've come from Penn or Maryville. I mean, and so um, affordability is sort of a problem and disproportionately affects certain groups. Um, and that is one of them. So I just wanted to kind of throw that out there, cause that's an interesting conversation I had at the meeting. Uh, go ahead.
Yeah, and this isn't sort of really as much a council report that sort of the, to play out that. I think you are recall number months ago, in one of the town halls, all the demographic data, it was shared. And we never really brought that back to the council, but I think that actually really helped highlight um, well, Duval as a whole, you look at one way and you start slicing the pie and you realize, you know, that they've come outside, we are disproportionately, you know, impacted in in various ways that from a per capita basis. Um, not necessarily distributed across the whole city. And I think it, and that might be an interesting topic sometime to 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 do with, we really agree. Data sets that we necessarily wouldn't pull out ourselves as a city, but in terms of how we think about some of the exceptions out of this. Um, because it has come up, you know, a lot of these decisions we make on on the halls make a lot of sense. And then, uh, you know, we're we're not necessarily taking adjacent steps to mitigate or affect the populations we're getting out of our our eyes. And I think that from all sides, I think it also, you know, will help.
Some better than hands, but I thought, oh, Councilmember. Naomi, yeah, all right.
Oh, okay, we'll go, Councilmember Shaker, now that I know.
What's on next, trouble meeting, real sticky?
There is one, yeah, I'll I'll email it out. Cause I'm gonna, I feel like it's August sixth, so I don't mind the skits. So I'll I'll send it out and see who wants to go. Um, Naomi, did you have something to add?
Uh, I think I'm gonna, uh, I think I decided that I'll just wait until the appropriate time for me to bring up the information. It was just um, wanting to mention that once we get to the discussion of housing, that the Housing Action Plan has specific strategies and implementation tools that we can use to anchor ourselves in dealing with what some people call a wicked problem.
Thank you. Thanks. Any other council members have anything? All right, so I think with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn at six fifty-two, that way we can have a little break before our council meeting. Thanks, everyone.
All right, so I think with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn at six fifty-two, that way we can have a little break before our council meeting. Thanks, everyone.
You know, it's got a more practical equation.
Everybody would like to call me Tuesday, July sixteenth, or Dubal City Council, we need to work. Would you open your address and join the class? I pledge allegiance to the flag, and I am a state supporter, and I give the republic for which it stands, my nation, and our government, and that is all the liberty and justice of the world. Everybody, please speak for all.
Yes, Mayor, um, Mayor Okerlander here, Mayor Portem McHenry here, Mr. Shaffer. Mr. Shaffer?
Oh, here.
Mr. Mercer.
Here.
Mr. Supple.
Here.
Ms. Knopfman?
Here.
Ms. Coco.
Coco, Coco. Right, we have a forum.
Um, and with that, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? Um, I see you have Agenda Bill twenty-four dash forty eight leads. Uh, we'll go ahead and put that under new business. So it is, um, field time. Um, all right, and so are there any other additions or corrections to the agenda? Councilmember Rappel?
Yeah, if I want to hold something off, I think that is a date appropriate time.
Yes.
I would like to pull Agenda Bill twenty-four forty-six, critical IT infrastructure investment.
Okay. Um, we'll add that under new business for discussion. And that will be the first item. All right, do we have a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
Sure. Second?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes unanimously, and with that, we have one proclamation this evening. World Ranger Day. Uh, excuse me, I'll go ahead and read that through the record. The role of park rangers and conservationists is vital in safeguarding our natural heritage and biodiversity for future generations. Washington State Parks encompass diverse ecosystem from majestic forests to serene coastlines, providing sanctuary to countless species of flora and fauna. Washington State Park Rangers play a crucial role in protecting wildlife, preserving habitats, and educating the public on sustainable practices, growing the hope and resilience in our natural environment. On World Ranger Day, observed on July thirty-first, we recognize and honor the dedication, bravery, and sacrifices of park rangers worldwide. World Ranger Day reminds us of the challenges and risks park rangers face in the line of duty, from battling wildfires to confronted illegal activities that threaten our parks and wildlife. Park rangers protect wildlife habitats and communities from environmental threats such as poaching, deforestation, and illegal wildlife trade. The stewardship of Washington State Parks is entrusted to dedicate park rangers, who safeguard these natural structures and ensure their accessibility and enjoyment for all of its users. World Ranger Day reminds us of the daily risks rangers face in protecting our planet, often working under challenging conditions and at significant personal risk. Now, therefore, I am the Okerlander, Mayor of the City of Dubal, hereby proclaim July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four as World Ranger Day. In the city of Dubal, I urge all residents, organizations, and governments to recognize and support park rangers and valuable contributions to advocate for their safety, well-being, and recognition. All right, um, we'll go ahead and move on to scheduled items. Uh, so the mayor's report, uh, not too much to report, I can say that we did have Association of Washington Cities Executive Leadership Briefing last week, um, have begun planning for uh, our annual board retreat, as well as having early discussions on, um, sessions for the annual conference next June in the Tri-Cities. Um, other than that, uh, I did want to share that I had the pleasure of going to the first national, or not national, now, summer stage of the year. Uh, I want to thank our community events for Nada Rino right now, and she's done a fantastic job. It was well-attended. The music was fantastic, and I, I've gotten a lot of compliments on, um, having different bands this year, and how excited people are to, to see, um, have a little more variety, um, so thank you so much. Uh, the ice cream from one of our sponsors has gone in just a few minutes. Uh, I just, this may have my children, but, um, they weren't there, so in time, so that's on them. So looking forward to tomorrow night with Santa Coco, um, and hopefully even larger crowd, and other than the weather, it's a little bit. And that's all I have. Um, administrator. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, I am still getting over two hours of driving today. Thank you, City Administrator, Mayor Portem. Um, I accidentally saved our comments for the audience, so if there's anyone from the audience that would like to come in and speak, uh, you may approach, put him, provide a name and address, and you'll have three minutes to speak. We have no one sent up the phone, I don't know. All right, and we have, so with that, um, we may now approve the consent agenda. Sorry, motion, please.
I'll do everything that's on the agenda.
So.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye on it. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Now we're back on track, and I'll turn it over to your RCW administrator for her report.
Uh, we did my report during, uh, council workshop.
You did?
I'm a counselor, of course, as well.
Excellent. Well, and with that, if we're moving quickly, we'll move to executive session under RCW four-two, that three-zero, that one-one-zero, seven-one-seven, the Republican candidates, all competing, as a condition of how much? Um, and how much time do you want, guys? Uh, I want to start with fifteen?
Maybe fifteen, or maybe ten? I don't know, council, do you sign in fifteen minutes, or are you?
We know the limit of fifteen minutes.
Okay. Start with one.
Uh, feel free to text me, I'll instruct, um, okay, I'll come down and remind you of fifteen minutes.
Okay.
Um, Mayor Portem is gonna call, it's gonna be a twenty-three?
Yes.
I have twenty-five. I'll wait until I can talk to them.
The Duval City Council has returned from executive session at 7:57 PM. And I'm going to give a word of mayor for Tim McHenry so they can do signature closing voting on moving forward as the candidates.
All right, thank you. So I'm just basically going to read out the instructions off of our, I guess, user ballots. And if I get anything wrong, please let me know. So each council member will have five votes. You'll place an X in the box next to the candidate's name you wish to vote for. And you may elect to place all your five votes on a single candidate or disperse your five votes between multiple candidates. We will each vote individually on paper quietly at the same time. And then following us completing this scoring matrix, I believe we'll just pass them over to the clerk and they will tally the results. And these will be public record. So and they all have our names on it. So our votes will be known. It's just that the time we're voting, it'll be quiet and we'll just vote individually and then send it down. Does anyone have any questions about that? And we'll send them to our deputies today clerk. Oh, okay. Great. Okay, so go ahead and vote then if you're ready. Pass my whole vote until it's done. I'll put my on box and I'll be able to see everyone will see my vote. There you go. Yeah. I guess it's, you know. Oh, right numbers.
If council would like, while the clerk's tallying, we can go on, discuss agenda bill 24-42. It helps as well, so with that. So the administrative plan. And so there was a request to pull this off the consent agenda. The question really centers around what funds should you be used to pay for the two items that are included in this agenda bill. The first is for approximately $22,000. It relates to multi-factor authentication on all of our computers. That is now required due to CIGIS, which is a criminal justice information system. Our apartments in the PBA, our community needs us to be in compliance with this by October in order for them to continue to function. So that's $22,000 approximately. The other remaining $80,000 plus is related to additional server capacity in the city. And then the question is, you know, how to pay for that. The city staff is recommending paying for these items out of contingency. If you look at the contingency policy, the funding document states that contingency funds are meant for when expected. Things that come up after the budget has been passed, we think that is the appropriate use for this particular project. But I don't know if the city staff want to add more to that particularly. I would turn it to the finance director, Raymond, or Dr. Villas, just because the requests is about some of the added utilities.
Well, I think. The fund is under budget mode, so broadly, if we're going to use any of our utility funds to support this, it needs to be proportionate and appropriate.
From a work perspective, I oppose any approach. We're covering protective needs, need dual authentication to do anything nowadays when you're using your own email or you're buying a second phone. It's what it is. It's part of the business. But yeah, I'm not sure opposed to that. Splitting whatever it is.
I would think staff, you added an administrative piece of business.
It's council, I can be asking questions to staff here. So one of the questions I have for my instructor is considering all of our funds and not knowing exactly how much how much each department actually uses these and putting dedicated funds, you have to be exact and very, very precise. How much administrative burden would that be for you versus paying, doing this small portion out of general fund, which contingency is, versus that increased risk of compliance to the city and the staff's time necessary.
Yeah, there is a burden because we want to make sure that we're, you know, doing the research on use and appropriating or allocating it out and justifying it. And something like this that is, to me, in my opinion, seems a very administrative support type thing. And use of general funds seems very appropriate and it would be less burden some time effort. Not just in the algorithm, but also in the process, you know, the expense.
Councilmember Allen? Yeah, I just wanted to. My original question was that, but when I wanted to clarify about why I wanted to use a contingency. I'm just going to read it to be quick, so I don't. Let's see. At any rate, my concern is that we are drawing down the contingency fund when we have existing resources that are more than sufficient and appropriate for covering the cost of this IT infrastructure investment. During the Tuesday city council meeting, I plan to propose that the utility funds water storage and the building permitting fund pay for their proportional, AKA fair share of IT infrastructure expenditure. The remaining amount could be paid for by the general fund balance that currently exceeds reserve requirements. The utility fund, the building and permitting fund have significant excess fund balance beyond required reserves continuing out to cover their proportional fair share of these costs. A contingency fund is an extension of the general fund and I do not feel comfortable using general funds that proportion do not feel comfortable using general funds to subsidize expenses attributable to other funds. Typically, IT expenditures are paid for by the funds that proportionately use IT infrastructure. There is already an IT internal service fund in place to accomplish just this thing. Utilizing these utility enterprise funds and the building and permitting special revenue funds is also in accordance with the best practice of using the most restricted money first when paying for an expenditure. I had the same argument when the one-time COVID ARPA funds were used to pay for expenses that could be allocated to utility and building and permitting funds. I consider the contingency fund as if I to be used in emergency situations when existing funds aren't under stress, such as during an economic downturn. We are most definitely not in an economic downturn. It's the opposite. Revenues skyrocketed in recent years. While I understand that the contingency fund would legally be allowed in this kind of situation, I do not agree that this is the type of scenario the contingency fund was intended for. And I just want to say that IT is administration, but there is a mechanism that's built into our budget and the accounting of how we manage transfers that proportionally that is charged to the IT service fund. There are inter-funding answers that come from all the funds to pay for IT. And so there's already a mechanism in place. It would just be a larger amount this year instead of the budgeted amount. And there already is a norma for proportionately paying. Those are the prices. So I'm just asking, can we just use the normal method of proportionately applying IT charges to the funds that use them? I mean, building and submitting and the utility, those are heavy users of IT. So anyway, it's just, I've brought this up before in the past. I think we're in a time of plenty right now. So it's very easy to just say, well, let's just use this money. It's easier, which is a reasonable approach. But I, I think that the typical way that you would pay for these things would be to have the funds that are utilizing IT pay for them. Anyway, I just struggle with. And then start your amendment.
I was going to make just one other follow-up. All of the funds we've talked about are appropriate uses for this. The contingency fund, quite closely is set up for those unforeseen things now playing a role in the budget as well as emergency items. When you talk about the transplants and the application plan, most of that is set during budget. So all of that preparation, all that time to determine what applications need to be made are set within our budget. This is not a budget. So it would take some additional effort to make sure things are allocated correctly. It can be done. But utilizing the contingency fund would allow us to track this one-time issue expense for history. It would be right there during the contingency fund. And it would reduce the effort and the burden of having to do those calculations for this expense now while we're trying to focus on building the next by a new budget. So. But again, all, you know, uses of the various funds mentioned are appropriate for this.
Councilmember Schaefer and then Supple.
Let's see. First of all, I do recognize the critical name for this. It's unfortunate this came came as a bit of surprise to us, but as far as NFA, I think not only the police needs that, I think the whole city needs that. Would use the proposal. As far as service storage, well, yeah, we got to, we got to have servers to store or data. So I don't, you know, I don't think any of this sort of arguing to get that. It's just a matter of where the fund comes from for this. I don't have a real issue using the contingency fund or the general fund. I don't want to burden, you know, staff who get more accounting because, you know, when one thinks of it, really it's one big bucket of money the city has and it just happens to be divided into different funds. And yeah, we budgeted those different funds, but still it all comes from that one, one big bucket. So bottom line, because I'm okay using the contingency fund and, and/or the general fund for this.
Councilmember Supple?
Yeah, I think this is appropriate expenditure for the contingency slash general fund. At this point in the budget cycle, I think, you know, when you're approaching the end of the cycle or something like this comes up, I think that probably contingency fund should be used for.
What else? Councilmember Kupel? I would agree with Councilperson Supple. I mean, as we all know, in our personal lives, the dishwasher breaks right after you, you know, spend all your cash for the year. These things have, it has to be paid for. It has to be done. It's a need. I think most of us either work in IT or have IT people in the lives and they were strongly recommended to me to them. So.
Yeah, I was, I mean, again, I'm not come down hard on either case. I mean, it's sort of one valid. I mean, when we have a fund balance in one area, I think it does make sense to ask the right questions. I mean, my question was more even around the allocation, if it can be done at the macro level or the micro level. Because obviously server capacity, they're driven by certain departments even within the business. And I don't know that we have tagging within our files that would, you know, allow you to proportionally distribute versus the an all of the expenditure. And at that level, that does seem like on your work, additional work that would need to be done to properly allocate it. You know, between there was, there was the authentication piece. Now, I think that's probably spread across the board, but it's also a much smaller part of the, the investment here. So again, not any strong opinion. I think this is something we, you know, want to revisit going forward as a change in process. So we, you know, as we move into the next funding, we take into account the surpluses and do the appropriate reallocation to make sure you are, you know, appropriate stewards. But I wouldn't want the additional cost and investment to sort of dilute the, the investment we're already making in terms of the capital.
May I mention? Yeah, I, you know, this is one of those things where I think either way would be fine. This is the way it's come forward to us and I don't see an issue with using contingency. And especially I was kind of looking at the totals. I know we have a max level balance or in like 155,000 and that, I wasn't sure. And it's probably quite at this point. But, you know, the interest earnings, I think, was the only recent activity, but then there was a larger sum that went in 2022. And so I just think for simplicity sake and the fact that it is fine to use this, that it would just be the most speediest, efficient way to get this done. Because I think this is a really urgent need. And just where we are in the year in this budget cycle, it just makes sense to utilize this. And I think that's why staff brought it forward like this. That's just my thinking.
I do have one follow-up question for my instructor, Raymond. So as you know, contingency funding bowl is a huge thing for me. And so I'm just, there was kind of an implication or an estimation that you can, using this money in a contingency fund would mean that we wouldn't have as much contingency at the end of the year when we provide those preparations. And we already about, you know, for the by any of, we budgeted to have a fund bowl. And so I just want clarification, confirmation that when we go and start our budget cycle, assuming we still have those, that fund balance, it's not allocated. But that can be put back into contingency to keep that fund goal.
Yeah. Basically, what we would do is once we get closer to the end of the by any of Yeah, uh basically what we would do is once we get closer to the end of the biennium, per policy, that's when it's, you know. Um, transfers made to bring it back up to levels. Uh, we'll take a look at the balance, determine what's needed and anything that would be a budget amendment. To ensure that we have the funding and we we can make that transfer.
Thank you. So that's a whole with the budget and. Uh, and still allows the I T people. So essentially all of the general fund dollars stay the same. That's a semantic. That's to your account. Exactly. Thank you.
All right, um, any other questions or someone like to make a motion? Councilmember Shaper.
All right, let's see. Question? No, no danger. Um, the uh, the the question is, uh, so this is automatic intended by by in for our policy, right? That we transfer. I'm not sure if excess is right, if any excess from general fund into contingency fund. Is that?
Right, as long as there's a favorable funding in general fund. Um, we can transfer enough to bring our contingency fund up to the appropriate level for policy.
Okay, good. Yeah, that that's what I was, that was what I was saying. So so good. So I'm moved to. I'm going to approve agenda bill twenty four forty six, uh critical item in respect to this.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All of, all of, all those opposed, please say no. No. Uh, let the record reflect that there were five yeses, one no from councilmember now. Um, and moving on, so I guess when a clerk is ready, um, we can uh hear the tally for the city council candidates.
Yeah, just sort of. Am I reading off uh. Your ballot and how many. Topics for.
Uh, yes, let me confirm with the city attorney. Um, the objective would be, it would be the implement of voting orally. So the. The matrix needs to be read as for each council member, correct, with their votes?
Uh, that becomes public information. I think for the purposes of this meeting, it would be. The minimum you would want to do is simply read the results with the understanding that the individual ballots will be, will be made public. So if. The council wants to have each individual ballot read, uh that can be done. Um, but as far as um just knowing what the overall results are, um, uh, that's. The minimum that would need to happen tonight.
There. So I don't have a preference. I don't commit to whatever. Council?
The general, general.
Any objections to that? All right, clerk McDonald.
Thank you. Uh, I have Jennifer Hernandez with six votes. Uh, Cassie Irvine Roman with zero votes. John Isaacson with eleven votes and Jeff Pop with zero votes and Stephen Trummer with thirteen votes.
And we will notify on the top three finalists. Um, and invite them to the council meeting next week to do the interviews and for the final. Um, our city attorney will be here to facilitate that meeting.
Thank you. Um, and we have one more executive session. Uh, fifteen minutes.
Wow, let's go. And hopefully our takers are high.
All right, uh, so we will, council and the mayor uh will uh go into executive session. There are R C W forty two dot three zero dot one one zero seven one seven. For approximately five minutes. If you do need to extend, uh, the clerk will notify the public of the extension. Um, if you do not respect the convention, you're not allowed to attend the session.